Good evening and welcome everyone to our regular council meeting of June 24th at being 5:30. I would like to call this meeting to order. Will we please all rise for the pledge of allegiance being led by Mr. Rick Hills, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get this meeting going, I'd like to take just a couple of moments and pay a little tribute to a council member that passed away, Mr. Fred Masalha. We brought his picture in here if some of you do not know him, but I want to thank his family for the service that he did do for the city of Pekin. I understand that his visitation is going to be, is it tomorrow evening?
Yeah.
Tomorrow evening from 5:00 to 7:00 at Henderson's. So anybody wishing to pay a little tribute to his family, please feel welcome to show up for the city of Pekin. I know it would be deeply appreciated. He did good things. He was here for six years. He was actually appointed by Laura Barra. She was the first female mayor that the city of Pekin had. So she appointed him for two years and then he ran and won, and so he served six years for us. So I want to personally thank his family for his service and time. Would anybody else like to say anything? Any other counsel?
I would just like to add that I've known Fred way before he was ever on the council, but Fred was a giver. He cared about his family, his friends, and the community, and he showed it by his actions. And I think the community will miss him dearly.
And you know, he was a great businessman in town, and I'm sure his family will continue the business going. So once again, hopefully someone will be able to have a little time and go pay tribute to the Masalha family. Madam Clerk, call the row, please.
Councilmember Anken.
Here.
Councilmember Oric.
Here.
Councilmember Nutter.
Here.
Councilmember Hoheimer.
Here.
Councilmember Abel.
Here.
Councilmember Hills.
Here.
Mayor Burris.
Here. Having the quorum, we will conduct business. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Madam Mayor, I move that the agenda be approved as presented. Second?
Motion made by Mr. Nutter, second by Mr. Abel. Any discussion on the agenda? Madam Clerk, call the row, please.
Councilmember Nutter.
Aye.
Councilmember Abel.
Aye.
Councilmember Hills.
Aye.
Councilmember Anken.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoheimer.
Aye.
Councilmember Oric.
Aye.
Mayor Burris.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Are we, Sue, are we able to vote or not?
I was told we weren't.
I was too. We're going to continue. I'm still going to call on you, okay?
In case it goes off.
Yeah, yeah. Chair would entertain-
Mayor, if I can just intercheck, I don't know if people at home listening are getting the background. If you, I'll just explain real quick. The air conditioner's out, so we got fans going.
Okay.
And I don't know if that's interfering with what they can hear or not, but there might be some background noise going on.
All right. I appreciate you saying something. We will try to speak up and see maybe if it comes out a little clearer. Thank you. Chair would now entertain a motion for the approval of minutes, please.
Madam Mayor, I move that the regular council meeting of June 10th, 2024, at 5:30 PM be approved.
Second?
Motion made by Mr. Nutter, second by Mr. Oric. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, call the row, please.
Councilmember Nutter.
Aye.
Councilmember Oric.
Aye.
Councilmember Abel.
Aye.
Councilmember Anken.
Aye.
Councilmember Hills.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoheimer.
Aye.
Mayor Burris.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. We have now come down to item number five, which is public input. Anyone wishing to come to the podium and speak, please state your name and make sure the mic is on.
I'd like to say rest in peace, Fred. I have known Fred a long time. He's a good businessman. And I'm glad, John, you clarified the air conditioning problem because I was wondering if you paid your bill. Because everybody's fanning themselves. My name's Keith Dunkelbarger. I've been a businessman in Pekin since 1980, built five homes. Then I'm on economic development. And I'd like to address the council members, the mayor, and I'd like to say, at your May 28th meeting, the mayor stated she was removing me from the Economic Development Committee because I interfered with city business in the future firefighters' union agreement. Those claims are false because Pekin citizens are not privy to the contents of future contracts. I have sent at least three emails to the mayor, city manager, and council asking for facts and proof of the mayor's charge. I've asked for a public meeting with the council, as required by your conduct code and city code, to clear my name from the mayor's defaming and slander statement. I've received no responses. Per the council's conduct code, only the council can remove a committee member after a public meeting to discuss any complaints. I might add, as a very proactive committee member, that Josh Ray and Mr. Dossie and several council members will attest to, example being the solar project on the agenda, I believe, this evening, I'm asking the council for that public meeting on your July 8th meeting agenda. I just want the opportunity to hear what those defaming statements, how they are substantiated. Thank you.
My name's Rex Pajolli. I was here a month ago with a request from the city regarding some infrastructure problems and erosion. I was told at that time someone would contact me. I have heard nothing from anyone, and here again, I'm here again, asking for someone to give me some assistance with this. This is a lovely complex that I own, had it for 24 years. There are some longtime residents there, one of them being the father of our sheriff. Being ignored by, or let's say, just not having been contacted is kind of a problem. I would appreciate some assistance on this. It's not really that complicated. It just needs some attention. There's a lot of stuff on the plate for the city, and I understand that thoroughly, but there's also maintenance that needs to be done for older properties and older property owners, as well as infrastructure changes that can be improved. So I don't understand why this isn't being attested to. So Josie, please, give me a call. I'd be glad to meet you over there. You met me over there a few years ago. It hasn't changed. It's gotten worse, and I need some assistance. I would love to. Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Mr. Dossie, you will be writing that down, correct?
She's going to go talk to him.
Yeah, and I see that Josie's going to go talk to him. And I didn't get his last name. Rex, I heard Pajolli.
I can.
Okay, okay. Anyone else from the public? Hi.
My name's Kathy Godby. I live over on South 10th Street, and I just had a, one question was already answered. With regards to the drains on the street, my street drains into Washington, and there's a drain right on the corner. I know a few weeks back, I was walking back from Schnucks, and it was completely packed with mud and debris, and I didn't know. I mean, I cleared it. I've cleared the one over on Sabella before too. But I'm just wondering how often those are inspected and whose responsibility it is to clean those out, because I know if it's clogged, then I have a lake at the end of my driveway. So that's the reason why I'm asking about that. And also with regards to the sewer capital improvement, I see that it's gone up quite a bit, and the volumetric sewer cost has gone way up. I just want to know what we're doing with our sewer pipes that were being taxed so high on that, if you could address that, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Godby?
Yes.
What, was it 10th and Washington Street?
Yes.
For the drain?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dossie, you did get that down as well?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Dean, too. I appreciate it. Anyone else from the public?
Ted Golden, I have a couple of questions and slash statements about the Hornicker development out on Veldy. I'm just curious. I didn't really exactly see the sidewalk plan and the site plan. Will there be sidewalks on both sides of the road for that development? There's a development that Mr. Hornicker did down on El Camino where there's discontinuous sidewalk. You cannot get to the Lindor Golf Range, B.C. barbecue. Just sidewalk just stops. So will sidewalks be a requirement for this development? It's funny that you mentioned Henderson Funeral Home. They just took some pictures out on Veldy Drive. And speaking of the sidewalks, now what's to prevent Mr. Hornicker from just saying to the city to go pound salt because they, the church and the funeral home, Henderson Funeral Home, were not allowed, they were not mandated to put in their required sidewalks. So we have discontinuous sidewalks at a church and a funeral home. So what are the requirements for the sidewalks to prevent discontinuous areas? I really wish the engineer was here currently. Here on Willow Drive, we just did a sidewalk project. There is a power pole right in the middle of the sidewalk. Doesn't have the required space around it. Brand-new sidewalk, no, no way around it, you're in a wheelchair. There's also an issue up in front of Subway and Burger King. There was a water main break recently, not really that recent now, several months ago. Whoever the contractor was, you put that asphalt back there, didn't do a real good job. You can see the waves in it. As you drive over it, you can feel them. They also, when all that water pushed up, all the sediment and everything, it all washed into the curb ramp. It has been full of debris and sand ever since. I'm pretty sure that the consent decree that you entered into speaks about maintenance. Maintenance is sweeping, preventing debris buildup. So how much longer is the debris buildup going to be? And lastly, I guess I will bring up Stube's. There's been a traffic cone at Stube's pretty much almost since 2017. There's a little drainage here. There's been a traffic cone over top of it. There used to be a little metal grate. I don't know what happened to that. Is this traffic cone going to sit there at Stube's on 14th Street in perpetuity? Are we going to deal with this this year? And one more topic, I guess. The new sidewalk on Stadium Drive. Someone pointed out how nice it is, nice 10-foot wide sidewalk. It sure is. Who is going to maintain that sidewalk? Because it's kind of a boondoggle of all different entities who's involved with that. You've got the park, you've got the city, you've got the school. So who is going to clear the snow from that? Because that would be a requirement? That's all I have. Thanks.
And Mr. Dossie, I'm assuming you got his, thank you so much. Anyone else from the public that wishes to speak?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Amy McCoy. I'm the executive director of the Pekin Area Chamber of Commerce, and just recently, we hosted the first downtown street party. It was hugely successful, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank all the city staff people that supported that event in all the different ways that everyone has to come together to make that happen. And so we're very appreciative of that, and I just want to thank you. And just on an extension of that, I'm going to speak on behalf of Pekin Main Street in the Bicentennial Committee, which I'm not necessarily, I mean, I serve on both of those committees, but I'm not in a leadership position. But I also, I know that those organizations are also very appreciative for all the help from the city staff as well for that June 15th long day of events. So thank you to everyone for that.
Thank you very much for all the time you put in as well. Much appreciated.
Can I leave my pictures off with the city clerk or city manager to take a look at? Thanks.
Anyone else from the public? Seeing and hearing none, public input is now closed. We have now come down to item six, which is the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move that 6.1, accounts payable to be paid proofless through May 31st. 6.2, financial reports, May 2024. 6.3, Breach Hill Fire Protection District Annual Statement. 6.4, Ordinance Number 4198-24/25, approving a rezoning request submitted by First Baptist Church from OS1 Office Service District to R4 One Family Residential District for the properties located at 700 South Capitol Street. 6.5 is Ordinance Number 4199-24/25, approving a variance request submitted by Raymond and Gloria Long for the property located at 32 Rainbow Drive. 6.6, Ordinance Number 4200-24/25, approving a variance request submitted by Hornicker Properties LLC for the vacant property located at the corner of Veldy Drive and Parkway Drive to reduce the minimum building-to-building setbacks from 30 feet to 16 feet. And finally, 6.7, Ordinance Number 4201-24/25, approving the final site plan submitted by Hornicker Properties LLC for the vacant property located at the south corner of Veldy Drive and North Parkway Drive, be approved.
Second?
I heard Karen first, so I'm going to say Ms. Hoheimer. Motion made by Mr. Nutter, second by Ms. Hoheimer. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a request to pull 6.1 off that consent agenda and move it down to 7.11 under new business, please.
Madam Clerk, did you get that? 7.11? And that's accounts payable to be paid proof list through May 31st. Correct, Rick?
Correct, yes.
Hearing no other, Madam Clerk, call the row, please.
Councilmember Nutter.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoheimer.
Aye.
Councilmember Anken.
Aye.
Councilmember Abel.
Aye.
Councilmember Oric.
Aye.
Councilmember Hills.
Aye.
Mayor Burris.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. We have now come down to item seven, which is new business for the city of Pekin. Chair would entertain a motion for 7.1, please.
I move Ordinance Number 4202-24/25, approving a tax increment financing redevelopment agreement with Hornicker Properties for a 34-unit duplex development at Parkway and Veldy Drive, be approved.
Second?
Motion made by Mr. Oric, second by Mr. Abel. Mr. Dossie, would you like to fill us in on this, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Jeff Hornicker of Hornicker Properties owns five acres of land at the southwest corner of Parkway and Veldy. He intends to construct a 34-unit duplex development on the site along with the necessary infrastructure, and he is seeking TIF assistance to accomplish this. The attached ordinance and TIF redevelopment agreement incentivizes the project by agreeing to provide a 50% real estate tax rebate on the incremental tax generated by the project through the life of the Court Street TIF, which ends in 2044, or until the cumulative reimbursement reaches the total eligible expenses of 1.67 million. Staff is recommending approval of the attached ordinance and the TIF redevelopment agreement. And Mr. Josh Ray can answer some further questions on this.
Josh, you have something to say?
Yeah, just want to make one note, Madam Mayor. In the packet, there is a typo on Exhibit 1 of the redevelopment agreement. The total number, the total dollar amount is correct, but where it says $30,000 for interest buydown eligible expense, that number is incorrect. That was, that was a typo from the last agreement that was provided for us. That number is roughly $1.08 million over the 20-year life of the loans.
Any discussion from council or questions for Mr. Ray? I do see that Mr. Hornicker is in the audience if we have questions for him.
I do have one for Josh. So that $1.08 million is 30% of the allowable amount?
The $1.089 million is 30% of the total estimated interest expense for his project.
Okay.
So his total interest expense is roughly three times that.
Okay.
So, but only 30% is eligible per state statute.
Well, just to make sure, because there was an error, I just want to clarify that.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Oric.
Yes. Also have a question, Josh. I've never seen that on these other TIFs, the 30% annual interest cost. Is that on other TIF agreements?
I don't think it's been necessarily applicable before. I don't know if a lot of projects get really big loans to do work in the past. I mean, the council's done several smaller projects. It's, it's been an eligible expense allowable by state statute. I don't know if the council's approved agreements in several years to do them.
Okay. So it is a TIF expense that-
Correct. Only 30% of interest, though.
Okay.
Is eligible.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Hills.
So I also had written down in my notes here, too, what was just talked about at public input. So will there be sidewalks constructed on both sides of those streets?
On the private roads?
Well-
He, he has them drawn on Veldy and Parkway. They're on there. But I do not believe on the private roads, are you going to put sidewalks?
Not on the private road.
Not on the private road.
Collet Sacks will not have sidewalks?
Correct.
So they'll just have ditches or?
He's going to have stormwater detention, so there's a detention pond that all the stormwater will go to.
Okay. Because that was going to be my next question, because I didn't see any storm drains anywhere on that site plan either.
Yeah.
So that explains that, why that-
Right. Yeah, these aren't engineered plans. This is just a design drawing. So once we get to the building permit stage, we'd have engineered plans.
So, I don't know. That's why I'm asking, because I haven't, I don't have it in front of me, and I don't know that I've even read it. But what, what exactly is, just to kind of clear up some things on these sidewalks, what exactly is the, how does that code read when you develop duplexes or condominiums? Like if they're on a cul-de-sac or they're on a side street like that, there, there's no requirement to put sidewalks in?
The code does require sidewalks to be installed along the public right-of-way when new developments take place, which is why it's installed, will be installed along Veldy and Parkway. We don't have any code requirements for installing sidewalk within private developments, just along public right-of-way.
Thank you, Josie.
Okay, so when you say within private developments, what, I mean, is there a limit on how many buildings would be included at private development? Like when they constructed that entire subdivision of Deerfield State, would that be considered a private development?
No, because they're city right-of-way in all of those roads.
Okay.
So these are private roads. And my opinion, the code does not require that. If that's something that council wants to change in the code or make more clear, I mean, staff is open to that, but we did not feel that the code stated that we had to put sidewalk along private drives, just along city right-of-way.
Okay. And there doesn't appear nobody, and I'm just asking to get these out in the open, so nobody has any concerns of any flooding issues on those streets then? Shouldn't be?
We're going to require detention on this property so that it doesn't, at least for the 25-year storm like our code reads, it doesn't increase the level of stormwater, you know, into our system. So now that's, that's another discussion that if we ever wanted to change our code, you know, to make that more stringent, we could. So I can't say that exactly, that it won't have any effect on our stormwater system, because all developments do, but we will require, require them to meet code.
Okay. So then, and just one last question on that, and just again to clarify, there's no language or no requirements, I'm presuming, underneath the ADA requirement laws for sidewalks to be on those streets. That's not something that's going to come back against the city on that?
Correct. There is no ADA requirement to put sidewalks, even on Parkway or Veldy. We just, in our code, require that.
Right, right. Okay.
Thank you, Josie.
Mayor?
Yes?
Josie, what exempted the church and the funeral home then? Because I just, you just said Parkway and Veldy, and it's right across from Jeff's.
I don't know. If I had reviewed those plans and had been city engineer at the time when those were built, I would have required sidewalk there. So I'm not sure why they, there wasn't in the past, but-
Just asking. Okay. Thank you.
Maybe it wasn't in code at the time. I'm not sure.
Might have been.
Okay. Mr. Nutter?
Jeff, thank you very much for this development. I know it's been a long time coming, been working on it, so thank you. The question I have, are there going to be curbs there?
Yes.
So you have curb, no sidewalk?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I need.
Sidewalk on the public right-of-way, nothing on the private area.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I want to, I want to kind of echo what Mr. Nutter just said. Thank you once again for bringing more housing to Pekin, beautifying our city once again. It's a long time coming. We appreciate it. Your other duplexes look beautiful. So thank you once again for believing in Pekin. Thank you.
I've got-
Mr. Oric?
Even though it's a private road, does it still have to meet city street road requirements?
No.
Okay. Because the only other one I can think of that's private is Rosewood Lane, and I think it's still a private street, isn't it? It's not under city-
Correct.
-maintenance. So this will never fall under city maintenance as such?
Correct.
We won't snowplow it? We won't do anything to it?
Correct.
Okay. And then another one, and you might know what it is. Are these going to be rental units?
Yes, they are.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Hearing no other, Madam Clerk, call the row, please.
Councilmember Oric.
Aye.
Councilmember Abel.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoheimer.
Aye.
Councilmember Anken.
Aye.
Councilmember Nutter.
Aye.
Councilmember Hills.
Aye.
Mayor Burris.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Once again, thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Hornicker. Once again, thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Hornaker. Chair would entertain a motion for seven point two, please.
I make the motion, ordinance number forty-two oh three dash twenty-four slash twenty-five approving the sale of city-owned property generally east of the current terminus of Brinkman Drive to Illinois American Water Company be approved.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Orick, second by Ms. Hoheimer. Mr. Dossi?
Thank you, Mayor. Illinois American Water has submitted a proposal for the purchase and development of one point nine acres of city-owned property south of the movie theater at the eastern end of Brinkman Drive. They intend to add a new water tower very similar to the existing tower south of Cook Street, which will add to the community's water resilience and will improve water pressure in the area. IAW has offered a purchase price of thirty-seven thousand one hundred four dollars, equal to the appraised value. This property is in the Court Street TIF district, and staff estimates that the development will result in approximately one hundred thousand of new revenue annually. Staff is recommending approval of this ordinance. And Mr. Ray can answer any other questions regarding this property?
Is, sure. Is that like on the corner of Lake Crest and Veldie?
It's, it's on the long property behind the, the theater. So if you think south of the AMC Theater, it's.
I just saw Illinois American Water Company guy out there spraying blue spray paint on, on Lake Crest this morning.
More in the area of Lakeshore and Brinkman, like just to the east of that there.
Okay.
Any other counsel? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Orick.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoheimer.
Aye.
Councilmember Hilst.
Aye.
Councilmember Abel.
Aye.
Councilmember Nutter.
Aye.
Councilmember Anken.
Aye.
Mayor Burris.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. Chair would now entertain a motion of seven point three, please.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance number four-two oh four dash twenty-four slash twenty-five approving annexation of one-three-five-eight-four Manito Road. Petitioners Jeff E. and Elizabeth A. Todd be approved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Abel, second by Ms. Hoheimer. Mr. Dossi, would you like to give us a little more information on this one?
Sure. A petition was signed and verified by Jeff and Elizabeth Todd as the petitioners. This has been filed with the city clerk pursuant to and in conformance with state statute, requesting annexation to the city of Pekin of a certain tract of land hereinafter described as the territory. A map showing the location of the territory with respect to the current corporate limits of the city of Pekin is attached as exhibit A. The city has provided proper notice of the proposed annexation of the territory to the city as required by law to the Cincinnati Fire Protection District and Cincinnati Township no less than ten days prior to enacting this ordinance for annexation. It appears that the petitioners are the sole, sole owners of record of the territory, that no electors reside within the territory, that the territory is not within the corporate limits of any municipality, and that the territory is contiguous to the present corporate limits of the city of Pekin. Staff is therefore recommending approval of this annexation. A public hearing was held on June twelfth, 2024 pursuant to section four dash three dash three dash four of the city code. The Pekin Zoning Board of Appeals has recommended that the territory be classified as I-2 general industrial, being the zoning classification that most closely conforms with the zoning of the territory that existed prior to the annexation. And Mr. McQuaid, can you answer any further questions?
Counsel? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abel.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoheimer.
Aye.
Councilmember Anken.
Aye.
Councilmember Hilst.
Aye.
Councilmember Orick.
Aye.
Councilmember Nutter.
Aye.
Mayor Burris.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. Chair would now entertain a motion for seven point four, please.
Madam Mayor, I move that resolution number one-five oh dash twenty-four slash twenty-five authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement with the Pekin Area Chamber of Commerce related to a funding application to the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity be approved.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Abel, second by Ms. Hoheimer. Mr. Dossi, once again?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to have our CDBG and grant coordinator, Tina Hawk, present this to you and explain on this.
Thank you, Tina.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
To the council. The Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity has released a NOFO or a Notice of Funding Opportunity, which is, the purpose of which is to revitalize downtown with infrastructure, building improvements, transit, and mixed-use projects. While the current, while the city is currently unable to receive funding from DCEO, the Chamber of Commerce is an eligible applicant for this program and has agreed to be the applicant on behalf of the city. The city has budgeted five hundred thousand dollars for downtown improvements in fiscal year twenty-four, and very likely will need to budget closer to two million in fiscal year twenty-five for an additional improvements to remain compliant with the ADA transition plan and to maintain downtown infrastructure. This could be budgeted from a combination of the Court Street TIF fund, the sewer fund, the capital improvement fund, or the general fund. This grant opportunity would provide up to fifty percent project funding. This would allow the city to build on a standard infrastructure work by also adding streetscape, mixed-use development elements like lighting, planters, water lines for upper-story living, et cetera. Staff does not recommend counting on this funding for support for the standard infrastructure needs, but this program would give us a greater capacity to make these projects more impactful to the area. The attached resolution authorizes the city manager to execute an agreement with the chamber to be the applicant for the grant, for a small grant administration fee to be paid for their participation in GADA certification and an application submittal fee. If awarded, their communication with DCEO, reporting to DCEO, and additional financial work for expenses and tracking reimbursement requests to DCEO and transactions with the city would cost another ten thousand dollars. The city would also be responsible for reimbursing the chamber for any audit required due to grant activities. That would be capped at twenty thousand dollars. The city would provide funding for the chamber to pay all expenses upfront, the chamber would submit reimbursement requests to DCEO, and then the chamber would pay the reimbursements back to the city. Ultimately, the city would be responsible for one point seven five million dollars. Staff intends to recommend that in the fiscal year twenty-six budget. The total ask on this grant is three point five million, with a fifty percent match from the city. Without the relationship with the chamber, the city would not be able to take advantage of the state funding for downtown. Staff recommends approval of the resolution and the grant agreement with the chamber. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Counsel? Mr. Nutter?
Tina, what's the, from the total program, the DCEO program, how much money was allotted for the total pro, for the total state?
For the total state, you want to know how much money is out there?
Thirty million, three hundred million? Yeah.
I have that right here. Two hundred million.
Two hundred million, so we're asking for three million.
Three point five.
Three point five, okay.
Total anticipated number of awards are twenty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Orick?
Tina, this other company that's in here, Middle American Government Consulting, what role will they be playing in this? Oh, that's the next one?
Yes.
I'm ahead of this for a reason. Sorry about that.
None. The answer is.
None.
Good answer, right.
Do you have an anticipated response time? Like you looking six months to hear back from them, two months, or never?
Yes. They expect to have this underway by fall of twenty-four.
Okay.
With a completion date of end of year twenty-six.
Thank you.
Mr. Hilst?
So my first question is, why is the city not allowed to apply for this grant?
We are currently on the DCEO stop payment list. Bob, would you like to take that one?
It, for the most part, right now, it's because we're behind on the audits. There were some other historic issues, I think, that put us in the crosshairs, but we likely will not get off the DCEO stop pay list until we are caught up or very close to caught up on the audits.
We are, I'm so proud of that, thank you.
So, that's where I kind of struggle with, with this whole issue, now that I know that. So if we're on, if we're on a, would you call that a stop pay list? Because of issues that we got going on in the city, it, it just seems a little bit unethical to me to go ahead and have somebody else do all the legwork for that application, but yet the city recoup all the benefits from it, for the most part, even though we're not allowed to fill out that application for those grants. We're going behind their back and doing it and having the Chamber of Commerce use their name while we do all the work and prepare all the documents, and then they turn it in. What's going to be? So whoever fills this application out, if this gets approved, what's the project that we're putting on that application? To do what work? What's the scope of the work? Because it says not to, don't count on this funding to support the standard infrastructure needs, which is what we need. We don't need planters, we don't need decorations and aesthetics, we need the roads fixed, we need the infrastructure fixed. So what's the project going to be when we fill the application out for this grant?
Josie, you want to take that one?
I would love to, thank you, Tina. So first of all, we're, I don't believe we're doing anything unethical.
I know, that's just my own personal opinion.
We are not hiding this from DCEO. We are going to be very straightforward in our application. I, we've already written those portions of the application. We're not hiding that.
Thank you.
So, there's nothing shady to imply. It's all above board. It's, and it's not that the city's not capable of handling funds, it's just that we're behind on our audits. That's just, it's a simple fact. That being said, this project would be to separate sewers on a portion of Court Street, which would help with the sewer smell downtown, in addition to setting us up for future projects to, to keep getting more water off of our treatment plant and more stormwater into the river rather than going to our treatment plant since it's in a combined system and currently needs to be treated. It would be to add some new water lines to buildings so that those can be developed on the second story for lesser cost on the private side. It will be to do some ADA improvements, basically ramps and then some curb and sidewalk work. It would be to do some planters, it would be to do some facade improvements, improvements on existing downtown buildings. We are talking about putting in catenary lighting, which is overhead, lighting between buildings and such, that would be across the street. I think those are the, the main. Did I catch everything, Tina?
Yeah, yeah, you got the big things, yeah.
So, we are talking about the project as a whole. The infrastructure costs are probably slightly, they're over half of the ask. The city is paying half of this, so we would get some of our infrastructure kind of subsidized by this grant, but a lot of the grant would go towards those aesthetic improvements. I understand that, that's not what your priority is, but if we can get that for free because we made this grant attractive to DCEO by putting in things that they would like to see in downtowns, then, you know, we win. You know, we get both the infrastructure done that we need to get done and we get these aesthetic improvements.
Right. So I just, and you say get it for free, that's another thing I kind of struggle with because we're not getting anything for free, we're having to pay fifty percent of whatever amount of money we're awarded for this grant. But yet, if we were capable of filling it out ourselves as the city of Pekin, we would only be paying twenty-five percent of it. So we're paying quite a bit more money of this, again, by having this funneled through the Chamber of Commerce. And we're supposed to sit up here and keep an eye on the taxpayers' money and kind of protect it, so to speak. And I know we've, everybody in the public has their own opinion on whether we do a good job of that or not, but at the end of the day, I'm not going to support taking city taxpayers' money and funneling it through a separate bank account that's being controlled by a nonprofit association. I'm not going to do that. I just, that's my own personal opinion, and I'm just going to leave it at that.
That is your opinion, and I'm going to give you mine, Josie. Thank you very much. There was six items that you just read off to us, and they are much needed. It will only beautify our city downtown. We are constantly being talked to, beautify downtown, beautify downtown. This is one huge step for us, so thank you. Mr. Burris.
And I will tell you, from personal experience, from being down there last Saturday all day, that sewer, yuck. That was just, it reminded me of Michigan Avenue in Chicago, walking down Michigan Avenue, that horrible sewer smell. And I thought, why is it so bad? Every once in a while, it was just horrible. So if you can get that fixed.
Hats off to you.
Kudos.
Yes, Mr. Abel?
Uh, the one that caught my eye was, we keep hearing about people interested in loft living downtown.
Yeah.
That's a very expensive, with the sprinklers and all that, mainly. This might help, part of that, go for that. So it would get, get somebody in down there and get the ball rolling that we do have facilities for loft living.
Bringing in more revenue. Yes, Mr. Nutter?
I want to elaborate on something Rick brought up. Who's writing the grant? The city's writing it?
Yes, the city is writing it.
We, we as a collective group are writing it. So in the scope of the project, is it breaking out each individual thing that you talked about with X number of dollars?
Yes.
So there is a potential that if we put in for X number of dollars, we may not get the whole thing, we could get part of it, when they go down through and say, okay, Pekin's going to get a million dollars.
That is correct.
So let's say it's a million. So DCEO provides half million and we have to provide a half million.
Yes.
But the way this stands, it's all going to be funneled through the chamber. The find, the, the funding and everything, all the transactions. Am I reading that right?
As I understand it, yes.
And for the record.
And we're going to pay a fee to do that. Like administrative or handling fee to the chamber.
Correct, because they, they do have administrative burden. But for the record, when they award the grant, we will come back to council, and if, you know, because they didn't give us the full thing that we'd asked for, the council can turn it down. If, you know, you can re, you can rerun the numbers, you know, they didn't do the full ask, you know, and you can reevaluate it also at that time. You, you have to accept the grant.
We as a council have to accept the grant once it's received.
Yes.
Regardless of the dollar amount.
That is correct.
And you'll certainly have to approve any bid, bid awards for any public improvements or anything like that. So you're not approving the project today, you're just, you're saying it's okay for us to work with the chamber because that's our only option for this grant.
Okay, thank you.
Hearing no other comments or questions. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abel.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoheimer.
Aye.
Councilmember Orick.
Aye.
Councilmember Anken.
Aye.
Councilmember Nutter.
Aye.
Councilmember Hilst.
No.
Mayor Burris.
Aye. Motion passes six one. Chair would now entertain a motion for seven point five, please.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that resolution number one-five-one dash twenty-four slash twenty-five approving the two thousand twenty-three CDBG Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report be adopted.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hill, second by Mr. Abel. Mr. Dossi?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask Tina to speak to this, being it's CDP.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna ask Tina to speak to this, being it's CDP, CDBG.
Tina?
This is the, the final step in the Consolidated Annual Performance Plan submission to HUD. This is where I need you to approve it so I can send it on to HUD. We have finished our 15-day comment period. There were no comments rendered for it. That comment period went through June 4th through June 19th, and with that, I'd be happy to take any questions. I have a breakdown of the final numbers, if you'd like that.
Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Hills?
Aye.
Councilmember Abel?
Aye.
Councilmember Orick?
Aye.
Councilmember Nutter?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoheimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Anken?
Aye.
Mayor Burris?
Aye. Motion passes seven, zero. Chair would now entertain a motion for seven point six, please.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that Resolution Number 152-24/25 readoption and amendment of Nationwide 457 Plan, Section B, I suppose, be adopted.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hill, second by Mr. Nutter. Mr. Dossi?
Thank you, Mayor. The city of Pekin has, since 1996, offered a voluntary 457B deferred compensation plan to its employees through Nationwide Trust Company. Such plans are common for local governments to offer and are provide, and they provide a beneficial tax deferred retirement savings supplement to staff. The city incurs no direct cost to provide this benefit. Management was approached by staff to add Roth and self-directed options. The agreement updates our plan with the, the new options. Also required are two amendments, one for CARES Act and one for Secure Act and other law changes, to ensure the plan is in compliance with recent legislation. Staff is recommending approval of this ordinance or resolution. And Bob, can you answer questions on this?
Any discussion?
One question. So, does this get updated in the employee handbook, then? Or is there anything in there that even states any of that stuff?
The, the handbook refers to the fact that we offer the plan. It doesn't go into details as to whether, you know, we have a mutual fund and a this and a that. That is the supplemental information that, that is provided to them, you know, upon request or upon sign-up.
Okay.
And then they also have a, basically a roving rep that will come out and actually meet with staff as well to discuss and evaluate. You know, they can talk through their, their risk tolerance and, and all of that. And I, I know that particularly members of the Fire Department are very good at taking advantage of this. And it was actually, it was their union that, that came forward to us and asked for, you know, the greater diversity of options with the Roth and the self-directed. We did a whole lot of due diligence to make sure that, that we don't obtain any additional fiduciary risk.
Right.
And so, there was a lot of back and forth. We went through a lot of documentation and such and found that, you know, that the, the updates that they were doing are just very standard in the industry, and there's nothing exotic that we're doing.
Good. Well, I'm glad it's being offered because oftentimes you get locked into one or two things and there's multiples out there. Times change, so, good, good idea.
So, this is included for every department regardless of who their primary insurance cover is?
Correct. It has, it has nothing to do with medical insurance at all. It's, it's just, it is full-time staff, but I think, I'm trying to remember, and, and part-time, sorry. It's for both full-time and part-time. Other than that, there's, there's no, they can't put in more than they actually make. And there are, you know, donation limits that, you know, would get, you know, adhered to, but, but there's, there's no other limitations.
So, this is, this is a, were you finished?
Yeah.
Okay. This is like a 401, but it is governmental, so it's a 457B.
Correct.
Just wanted to clarify.
Correct.
Hearing no other questions, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Hills?
Abstain.
Councilmember Nutter?
Abstain.
Councilmember Anken?
Aye.
Councilmember Orick?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoheimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Abel?
Aye.
Mayor Burris?
Aye. Motion passes five, two abstain. Chair would now entertain a motion for seven point seven, please.
Madam Mayor, I move that Resolution, Resolution Number 153-24/25 approving agreement with Middle America Government Consulting Incorporated for consulting services be approved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Anken, second by Mr. Orick. Mr. Dossi?
Thank you, Mayor. The city has been utilizing GovTemp's for services regarding the finance director position and for insistence in completing our audits. Bob Grogan is the current Temp staff member assigned to Pekin. Recently, Bob submitted his resignation, resignation to GovTemp's, and in essence, this agreement before council is to retain Mr. Grogan's services at the same rate as the previous agreement with GovTemp's. The term of the contract is good through December 31st, at which time both parties can determine if there is a need to continue with services. If services are determined to be necessary, staff will again bring a matter before council for approval. Staff is recommending approval.
Any questions? Mr. Hilst?
What about the, when I read through here, I think all I saw was the dollar amount per hour and time and a half. What about the expense payments for per diems for hotels and meals and things like that?
The per diem, so, first off, our, our policy doesn't apply to him. He's a contract employee, not an employee of the city. So, we would cover the hotel, which would be the same. In essence, it's gonna be exactly the same as what we have with GovTemp's. We pay for the hotel when he's here and the GSA.gov website per diem mileage that's standard through the industry.
Which changes every year.
Could change, yeah. It's not a per diem. It's just mileage at the mileage rate.
So, meals aren't included in that, then?
No.
Okay. And then just one other question. I think this says this runs through the end of this calendar year, correct?
Correct.
So, what happens if we hire somebody full-time for that position between now and then?
Yeah.
Then this contract will be...
My, my intentions are, we'd retain Bob to assist and get the new director up to speed and continue, because he was originally hired to work with the previous finance director to catch up and get the audits completed and up to speed. That would be my initial intentions, to continue focus on that, but...
For what length of time?
Until we get them caught up, which would hopefully be first part of next year. That being said, if we hired a finance director that would be here in-house, we have a remote option that he would be able to accomplish a lot of that without the travel and hotel stays. So, there would be some cost benefit there. It's kind of up in the air as far as...
Possibly an amendment to this contract.
No, it wouldn't be an amendment to the contract. It just wouldn't be paying mileage or hotel if he's working remote. I'm sure there's still gonna be some travel back and forth, maybe an overnight stay as we start completing audits, or we have to do some things. It just wouldn't be as much.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's, and it's two-week cancellation termination, is what we currently had in the agreement. So, we could terminate...
Notice, you mean?
We could, yeah. We just give them a 14-day notice.
Right, right.
Or, or vice versa.
Hearing no other, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Anken?
Aye.
Councilmember Orick?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoheimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Nutter?
Aye.
Councilmember Abel?
Aye.
Councilmember Hills?
Aye.
Mayor Burris?
Aye. Motion passes seven, zero. Thank you, Bob. Chair would now entertain a motion for seven point eight, please.
Madam Mayor, I move that Resolution, Resolution Number 154-24/25 approving agreement, oops, sorry, wrong one. Let me start over.
That's right.
Madam Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 154-24/25 approving the purchase of new dissolved oxygen sensors from HAC be approved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Orick, second by, excuse me, Anken, second by Mr. Orick. We, we're getting a little hot in here. Mr. Dossi, would you like to fill us in on this, please?
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution is approving the purchase and installation of new oxygen probes for the aeration tanks at the wastewater treatment plant. These probes are critical for the operation of the blower system and control the oxygen content for the aeration tanks. Their function is to control the amount of air that is placed into the tanks and will lengthen the life of the blowers themselves. And if you haven't been down to the wastewater treatment plant, I recommend you go down and take a tour.
I haven't. You know, I did when I first became mayor, so it's been a year. I'm ready to go back down there.
There's not a gas mask strong enough to get me down there. But, true, true story.
Still got it. Still gotta do it every once in a while. Any questions or concerns? Sure, Mr. Nutter.
So, is this the only company that provides those?
So, for this particular system, yes. There's another vendor called Lakeside, but it would be a complete rebuild of the system itself. These are initial to the plant in 2012, so it's proprietary and...
Got it. Had to ask. I, I figured that's probably what it was, but, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Nutter, if I could add?
Yes.
I was just talking it over with Nicole and Sue. We are hoping to, by the next meeting, to add it as a standard field award method. So, if it's a sole source, it will automatically prompt us to say sole source, or RFP, or state contract, or, you know, quotes received, low quote, you know, something like that. So, we're gonna have a standard list. That doesn't obviously apply to everything. There's things, you know, Tina just had the, the report that she approved, wouldn't have that. But for things where we're awarding contracts and such, we're gonna have that as a standard dropdown mandatory field to be addressed, or an NA would be there.
What, I, I have to ask, would you've done this if we hadn't passed the previous resolution?
You would've had to ask somebody else.
It's a great idea. I mean, it really helps because when we're going through reading those, I, I kind of figured that's what it was, proprietary, but you don't always know.
And to be honest, I, I was tired of going and getting out of my desk and going and asking folks like, okay, now tell me how did we come up with this? You know, just because, you know, if somebody only does one or two of these, you know, a year, they aren't thinking about, you know, putting in how it was awarded, you know, whether it was sole source, et cetera.
Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Anken?
Aye.
Councilmember Orick?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoheimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Nutter?
Aye.
Councilmember Abel?
Aye.
Councilmember Hills?
Aye.
Mayor Burris?
Aye. Motion passes seven, zero.
Mayor, if I can, real quick, before you call this out, just for council's information, seven point nine and seven point 10 are...
Tandems?
Yeah, choose one. One of them is basically, on the tandems, there's a truck readily available that they can put into service, but it's cost a couple thousand dollars more. And the other one is, basically, it's like, what, a six-month?
Yeah, it's, it's minimum six months.
It's a minimum six months. It has to be billed. So, the reason that these, there's these two items, we're not purchasing two trucks. We want council to choose one or the other, and if you want the other one that can be delivered ASAP, then there's a slight cost difference, and we just wanted to put it on there so you can let us know the direction you want to go.
Kate, do you want to add anything to that? We can't put them together.
No.
Yes, no?
Putting them together, you'd have either a motion to approve or a motion and deny them both. So, no.
You can't.
You can, I mean, you can make a motion initially just to open the floor for discussion and then, you know, have somebody make a motion to approve one or the other, or you can go in the order that they're in on the agenda and just vote no to the one you don't want and vote yes to the one that you do want.
And that was the intent when they were put on here this way? You would just vote no and vote yes?
I'd like to leave them as is and vote for, go for each one of them. So, Chair would entertain a motion for seven point nine, please.
Madam Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 155-24/25 approving purchase of a new one-ton, single-axle plow truck from Morrow Brothers be approved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hoheimer, second by Mr. Abel. Mr. Dossi, would you like to fill us in on this, Morrow Brothers?
Yes, this was for the one-ton truck in the amount of $134,362. It was the low bid for the state bid of the one-ton vehicles. It will have all the features for summer and winter needs, including a plow. There is a four-to-six-month build time on this truck before we receive the vehicle, and, you know, it's just kind of up in the air on how quick they get those built.
Thank you. Any questions?
May I, Mayor? I'd just like to make a point on the second one, which is saying local. Local means inside the city limits. This truck here, I don't know why, Galbraith Ford, it's a Ford truck, isn't it? Why Galbraith? We have a Ford dealer here in town. Why, Off Triggs down in East Peoria, aren't they?
Off Triggs in East Peoria, and it is Tazewell County.
But we go by the city of Pekin. It has to be in the city limits.
I, I understand that, but they don't sell those trucks in Pekin.
Yeah. Well, it's, that doesn't qualify as local, then, according to the policy we have.
It's, it's more local than Taylorville.
Well, that's true.
I think that's what they're looking at, is it's local, they have it, we can actually go pick it up and have it.
Well, the only thing, yeah.
Yeah.
It's available.
My, my aspect is warranty purposes.
But it doesn't meet the policy of local purchases. That's the only point I wanted to make.
Mr. Nutter?
On seven point nine and seven point 10, I will be abstaining from that vote as a result of a family member working in the Street Department, but on seven point 10, I will make a comment, so.
Okay. Thank you. You know, and I don't know if this is the right time to say it or not, but you abstained earlier and, and now you're explaining, so I appreciate that. Yeah. So, I don't know if we legally have to or not, but I appreciate that. Pardon me? I get it. Yes, Mr. Anken?
What is the urgency of this truck?
So, we have an older aging truck that next year we'd like to take out of service. This is gonna replace that truck the following year. If we have enough money in the Street Department budget, we'd like to replace that truck. We have new staff members now that we're hiring. We need another vehicle for them this winter for operations and summer. So, that's part of the purchase of this new one-ton vehicle.
Hearing no other, oh, excuse me, Mr. Abel.
I, I just think when both Dean and city manager kind of said, well, we think it's coming four to six months. It could be eight or 10 or 10 months. Snowplow means winter. Six months gonna get us into winter for the $4,000 difference. I'd say if we can get it and it's still there, I may have sold it this morning, Dean, right?
You never know.
If it's still there tomorrow morning, I'd say we go for it, because that, that six months could be a lot longer.
Appreciate that. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
So, so just to be clear?
Yes.
Yes would be move forward with this purchase?
Correct.
No means that seven point 10 would be the yes vote? Maybe.
Got it.
Yeah, unless you want to vote no on both.
Okay. We are all clear? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Hoheimer?
No.
Councilmember Nutter?
Abstain.
Councilmember Abel?
No.
Councilmember Orick?
Aye.
Councilmember Anken?
No.
Councilmember Hills?
No.
Mayor Burris?
No. Motion passes five, one, one abstain.
No, fail.
Fail, excuse me, fails, fails, fails. Fail. Wow, look at that. It's working. Now, we go to seven point 10, please.
Madam Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 156... Madam Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 156-24/25 approving purchase of a new one-ton, single-axle plow truck from Ufftrings Truck Center be approved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hoheimer, second by Mr. Abel. Mr. Dossi.
Mayor, it's the, basically the same vehicle. The difference in price is one thirty-nine, seven oh eight. It's available now and have all the features required for summer and winter needs, including the plow.
Any questions or comments or concerns on this one?
Even though I'm abstaining, I think this is the wise decision. You get it in the next, hopefully, couple days. It's available to use, we can get it on the road, because I know that other truck has possibilities that may not last who knows when, so. And it's just a better truck for the application of everything you use down there.
Agreed. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember...
Clarify the vote again, Mr. Dossi.
Yes, we buy it, no, we don't.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Hoheimer.
Aye.
Councilmember Abel.
Aye.
Councilmember Hilst.
No.
Councilmember Nutter.
Abstain.
Councilmember Orick.
No.
Councilmember Onkin.
Aye.
Mayor Burris.
Aye. Motion passes four, two, or is, did I miss one? Five, yeah, four, two, one abstain. Now, yeah, now we go to seven point one, or seven point eleven, which is six point one on the consent agenda, was polled for seven point eleven. Mr. Hilst, you had this polled, so I will call on you.
You want me to read it? And then discuss it?
Well, it's council payable to be paid proof list through May thirty-first, correct?
Right, but since I polled it, we need to make a motion to approve it, correct?
Yes.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve seven point eleven. Move from six point one under the consent agenda for the council payable to be paid proof list through May thirty-first be adopted.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hilst, second by Mr. Orick. So, I'm not gonna call on you, because I'm gonna ask you why you wanted it polled.
Right, I got a couple questions on some of the payments that were in there.
Okay.
That's why I polled it.
Okay.
I had a few, so I didn't want to hold up the whole entire vote earlier. So the first one I'm looking at, so I thought we were told at the last meeting about this constellation, that we were just paying a brokerage fee on that, and we weren't paying anything into Constellation, but there's a payment to Constellation on this council payable report for... Almost twelve thousand dollars for several different line items for utilities in different departments.
It's for natural gas, correct?
What's that?
Our natural gas agreement is with Constellation, which is a gas supplier for the...
So the city does have a contract with Constellation, but it's just for gas and not electric?
Correct.
Has that been approved by the council?
Before my time.
Yeah, so, so we actually looked at this a couple months ago. The council approved a resolution allowing the city manager to enter into these agreements because they're essentially stock market trades, you have to enter in at the correct time. So I can't remember what the resolution was, but we did enter into that, or the council did approve that resolution and allowed the city manager to enter into this agreement for the best rate we could get on natural gas.
So is this similar to the electrical one, then?
So, no, this is not an aggregation program. This is actually the city's facilities, our, our use of natural gas, it's not the public.
Just for the city, okay. Does anybody know when that expires?
I want to say...
Just curious, you can look it up later.
Yeah, I want to say January of twenty-six, but I could be a little wrong about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
There's another one in there, Two American Water Company for shut-off costs, and we don't have any money budgeted in that line item, so what are we paying per shut-off? If we have to call the water company up, shut off somebody's water, what are they charging us to do that?
I, I'll have to get back to you on that. I thought it was like seventy-five dollars or something like that per. And then we tack that on to the, the lean, you know, when it, if it ends up going through, and then we recoup that.
So whenever that individual gets to the point where they turn that water back on, and they have to pay all bat fees, that's one of them they have to pay?
Correct, correct.
So whatever we, for the most part, I guess, maybe then, whatever we spend on that, eventually we get that back?
Correct. And I think a prior practice was, they, they took that revenue when we get paid back and then sort of washed it, and it's not technically proper accounting, so we have to split it, and that may have been one of those new accounts I had to create, because, you know, you actually have to expense it on the front end, you know, when you do it, and then, and that's an if we get paid back. So for instance, if we end up doing a shut-off, ends up getting demolished, you know, sometimes we never get that money back, right? Sometimes we do end up eating it, but more often than not, and I actually, Melanie and I have been, you know, having a lot of talk about being better at our collections, we're really working forward with coming up with a better plan on, on dealing with a lot of those issues and streamlining it. And it's, it's a, it's a thankless process, you know, nobody wants to ever have to shut people off, but one of the impression, one of the things that I thought was interesting to learn is a large number of the folks that we end up shutting off are repeat offenders. Like, it's not as if it's, you know, a different twenty people every month, it's often, you know, ten of them got shut off six months ago, and then we got them on a payment plan, they got put back on, and then they're getting shut off again.
Okay. There's another payment in here to Cobbler Corner, ten thousand dollars for TIF payment that they sent an invoice in at the beginning of July of last year. Why are they just now getting paid for it?
I don't know why it wasn't paid before, but the business owner a couple months ago reached out and said, hey, we submitted this, we never got paid, what's the case? So I just confirmed that we hadn't made payment before and went ahead and processed it for their agreement.
Okay. The Clark Baird Smith LLP Legal Services for Police Labor, is that the only attorney firm? Let me rephrase that. Is police labor negotiations, is that attorney firm the only one they're dealing with, just the police?
They're do, they're dealing with that as well as Teamsters.
They're doing the Teamsters ones also?
Right.
Okay. Is that all they're doing, is just labor negotiations?
Labor, yeah, Labor Matters, yes.
Okay. Farnsworth Group, we just paid some more money to them for some more engineering for Phase Three B and C on that CSO project. How, how much more engineering is gonna be required down there before any construction actual? Any idea, Josie, maybe, on how much money we still are gonna have to pay them just for engineering?
Most of the design work is done, but it's, it's the coordination between the railroad, it's the preparing documents for the low-interest loan that we've applied for. It's all of those type of activities that they're still helping us with. We have to reapply for permits to be able to be eligible for this low-interest loan that we're applying for. So it's whatever activity is required to get the railroad on board with the project, which it's hard to define how much more work that will be. I don't expect it to be a lot. I would expect that we have less than fifty thousand dollars remaining, but I can't guarantee that.
So a lot of this, a lot of these that we're paying currently, then, or moving forward, aren't necessarily like field engineering stuff, it's all paper and document work that they're doing?
Primarily, yes.
For the most part? Okay. Park District, so there's a payment in here for utilities that we paid for the riverfront utilities to the Park District. How are we, what, what's the deal with our utilities down there? Why are we paying the Park District on those?
So there's an intergovernmental agreement on the riverfront park that we split the cost fifty-fifty between the Park District and us for any repairs, any utility costs, water costs, electrical costs. It's an agreement.
Whose property is it?
Part, we own that park, but they, huh, two thousand twenty, they did some infrastructure upgrades, and there was an agreement with the Park District to split the cost, and any improvements outside of that is a fifty-fifty split, like the splash pad, that was an agreement that was brought to council two years ago. It was a fifty-fifty split.
Have we paid that?
Yeah, Bruce paid it.
Okay. All right, okay, so there, here's one, I think I got one more on here.
Mr. Nutter has one after you're done as well, correct?
Okay. Tazewell County Treasurer, so we paid almost a thirty-seven thousand dollar payment to them for real estate tax expense, but we don't have any money in that line item budgeted. Is there a reason why we didn't budget any money in that line item?
I'll have to, I'll have to, let me look at, let me get back to you on that.
Okay.
And we did, so there was some tax, tax expense, it's just like when we rent farmland, we still have to pay taxes, so like, there's no getting out of that. And sometimes when we purchase land, we end up, it's part of the deal that we end up having to pay it from the prior year, it was part of, you know, the closing statement, et cetera, so that number does sort of vary from time to time. But we did, we, yeah, we just made the, the payment the other day, but I'll, I'll check on what line item it's through. Yeah, we paid, we paid both sides of it, too, just so that we wouldn't miss it. We, we have had some administrative issues in the past where we just aren't getting our paperwork in.
Both sides for fiscal year twenty-five or twenty...
Yes, yes, we paid the fall payment as well.
Okay.
Yeah, just to make sure that it doesn't get missed, because it, nothing worse than us having to pay a late fee, right?
So, Mr. Hilst, even though it's governmental and the city owns it, if we are making a profit on it, any kind of...
Right, but I was just curious why we don't have any money budgeted when we know we're gonna be paying something every year on that, right?
It's just probably missed or some sort of...
It may just be in a different fund, I'll have to just check that.
Okay.
Do you, off the top of your head, you have it there, which fund that was getting paid out of?
I think it's public property, it's oh-six-eight.
Okay.
Five ninety-three-hundred.
All right. My, my gut is that it may have been general ops before, and we just made the, the decision it may be better in public property, but I'll, I'll get you a firmer answer.
I'm pretty sure we used that line item last year. Previous years, we break down some of them into TIFs.
Well, it says real estate tax expense, that's the description on that line item, so. That, okay, that's all I have, thank you.
And I apologize, Mr. Nutter wants to wait on his, but, so, with that, any other, any other comments or questions? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Hilst.
Aye.
Councilmember Orick.
Aye.
Councilmember Onkin.
Aye.
Councilmember Abel.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoheimer.
Aye.
Councilmember Nutter.
Aye.
Mayor Burris.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. We have now come to item eight, which is any other business to come before the council. Mr. Dossi.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder, July fourth, nine AM, we'll be sharing the contents of the time capsule.
Glad you brought that up.
And I believe Chief Reese has something.
Mr. Reese.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a structure fire earlier today that actually wound up involving six structures all in all, and I just want to give a shout-out to our, our guys working in that heat, did a really good job of keeping it minor to the other structures, and a big shout-out to the street department who showed up with a piece of equipment that was, it saved a ton of labor-intensive work, tearing apart, part of a roof structure, so nobody got hurt.
Excellent.
Same to the police, thank you for their help, so, thank you.
Excellent, I say. I fire department, police department, street department, second to none. Thank you so much. Anyone else, Mr. Dossi?
I, I just did, since audits have come up a couple times, just to give you just a very quick update, it's moving along, they've, they've begun field work, and we've already got them, you know, right after the other one was presented, we were back in their face with, here's all of our stuff, and currently, they are waiting on us for nothing, and so far, so good.
Excellent news.
You know, no guarantee on anything, but it's, it's going well so far.
Excellent.
And we continue to have, you know, strong dialogues with them, they ask us questions, we, we bounce back asking them questions, and it's, it's going well. Still can't predict, you know, oh, hey, August first, or anything like that, but it's, there's no roadblocks that I've seen. Yeah, put it down, thank you, Mr. Nutter.
Great news, thank you so much. Anyone else, Mr. Dossi? Josie has something.
We've been getting a lot of questions about the reconfiguration of the intersection at Court and Parkway, so I just wanted to briefly touch on that, if you'll kind of bear with me. So that intersection is being completely redesigned with new traffic signals in different locations, redoing a lot of the median work and reconfiguring how the medians are laid out. This intersection has been a high traffic safety issue for a long time, we have a lot of crashes at that intersection and have had throughout the years. So the primary concern was trying to improve safety of this intersection. So with that, there's gonna be some lane changes in how traffic moves through that intersection, and that kind of causes the whole intersection to shift a little bit to the west, sorry, to the east, towards Walmart, and that changes how traffic flows continue towards Walmart. There's left room for a turn lane that would go to the shopping center at Market Square, so there is no more left turn going to be allowed for that. We are going to try to put up some signage to try to teach the public how to get back into that facility and make sure that they, you know, maintain their current level of business. We're also trying to prohibit the left turn out of Casey's back onto Court, because a lot of people with that median not extending past their entrance, we're trying to do that, and that's really not a safe maneuver. So we are trying to improve safety on this intersection. I'm sure there will be some, some relearning of, you know, just your traffic patterns, getting in and out of some of those locations, but the city will do what we can to help with signage and just generally try to put out social media posts, whatever we can do to try to make people understand why we did it and, and make people understand how they can get where they need to go, so.
Thank you. I, I've been questioned as well, so thank you very much for clarifying.
Josie, are they going to, are you going to close up that right turn onto Court Street from Casey's, so they will just have to come out onto Sunset, or are you gonna still have the two openings?
We'll still have the openings at Casey's, you'll be able to take the right onto Court Street.
Only because I, I use that intersection all, every day.
Sure.
And, you know, somebody will come, you know, turtle-driving out of, taking our right onto Court Street when I've got the green light to come around the corner, and boy, you know, there's a lot of times I've had to slam on the brakes because somebody's just slowly pulling out, which, they're being safe, but it's so close to the intersection.
Sure, so that was one of the things that Casey's did require, they wanted to maintain their entrances somewhat for getting semis in and out of there, whenever they have deliveries and whenever they're taking fuel, so that's not something we're gonna close down, but understood, you know, that you can't be flying around on that...
How about a sign, no exit?
On that right turn.
Josie, will the left turn lane up by Missy's into Market Square still be there?
No, that's the one I was talking about.
Oh, I thought you meant coming up approaching the intersection, turning left onto Parkway.
You'll still be able to take the left onto Parkway, and we'll be able to come around that way.
I misunderstood, I'm sorry.
Or you'll be able to go to Cottage Grove and take the left, and we're gonna put some signage there to make sure people know how to get into that facility.
I understand, I misunderstood at first, I thought you meant the first left.
While you're on that subject, turning off Cottage Grove behind that small area, is that city property? Is that a city road?
No, it's a, it's a private entrance to that facility.
So we're gonna take it off of Cottage Grove onto a private entrance?
It's a private entrance for the mall.
It's a shopping center entrance, is my understanding.
Just asking, just, just curious. I was just curious that that is a street that we will, is the mall, people gonna maintain that? The plowing and everything else and fixing the roads, or fixing potential breakdown of... The plowing and everything else and fixing the roads or fixing potential breakdown of the asphalt?
I believe they have been.
Okay.
Are you, are you talking about the street by the car wash?
Yeah. Josie, how many accidents are there on that left turn going into, uh, the supermarket a year?
I don't know that off the top of my head, I can get you that number.
I'd like to know that, because to me, the, the roads are to facilitate the movement of traffic and I, I think it's not gonna be, I, I don't care for it, I mean, I go up that way a lot. And I don't wanna drive three blocks out of my way because instead of turning left in there, I'm gonna have to go up to Cottage Grove, a block, down a block, and then take a frontage road, which isn't even city property, it's a private road into the parking lot, is that correct?
You can turn at Parkway.
No, I don't, I don't wanna go Parkway, I wanna go up.
Okay.
Because either way, it's about the same distance, I have to go down Parkway and then come around to the front, so.
It's a block, not three blocks.
Well, it's a long block from Court down to the thing, a block back.
But it's all about safety, I, I appreciate the safety.
I think, Josie, we had this discussion a little bit earlier and because there's federal funding and certain things involved in this, we're also obligated to follow certain safety measures, is, am I correct in stating that?
Yeah, all of our intersections on any projects with federal funds are required to go through IDOT, they have to be approved and there's not enough, um, room to fit enough cars in a left turn lane going into the Ace Hardware Value Check parking lot at that location, so there, since there's not enough storage for cars, they end up backing out into the through lanes and causing.
Same thing happens on the other side there, uh, when they're trying to turn left onto Parkway from Court. There's many times that, there's not enough room there for them, there, there's where there's a lot of traffic going in there. In front of the Panda Express and the Donuts.
For the right turns?
The left turn.
There's a whole lane that extends all the way to fourteen.
But I go up there and there's cars that can't get in the turn lane because they're waiting for the light to change to turn onto Parkway.
I think it might be simpler if we look at a map together and talk through it, would that be something that you'd be willing to come into?
The turn lane onto Parkway, headed east, when you get to Parkway, there's a left turn lane to go onto Parkway.
Okay.
There's cars that fill that up and they, there's not enough room there, because there's where most of the traffic goes, that I've noticed. I, I go that way quite a bit.
We were able to, um, with the number of cars that go through that intersection and the number of cars that go into that left turn lane, accommodate, um, what was required for storage for IDOT's standards, so.
So if you go that way, why aren't you turning into Value Check and, and Ace Hardware that way as well?
Because it's not as convenient. If I just go on up a hundred feet and I can go straight in.
I take that way a lot too, and I've, I've really honestly never seen that being a problem.
I haven't either, I've never seen that, I've never seen an accident there.
When you're going to the west and people are pulling into Dunkin' Donut drive-through.
Yeah.
That backs up onto Court Street worse than that turn lane does.
Yeah.
If you could come up with a design fix for that, I would love to hear it.
They already built it, right?
That one's a little trickier, for sure.
It's a special use, correct?
Would council like to give us direction to shut down their drive-through, is that what you're suggesting?
No, I just simply asked if it was a special use.
Drive-throughs are a special use.
Just FYI, also, there was a big three or four car pileup at Fourteenth and, uh, Court last Thursday or Friday with traffic signals there, but they still had three or four cars being towed from the intersection.
I, I think we're trying to.
We will never design roads.
I think we're trying to split hairs here, we, we're, yeah, she, she's just trying to tell you that there's certain, certain federal guidelines they have to, um, follow and, um, that's plain and simple. And safety, safety within the city, so, we appreciate it. Um, any other staffer? If not, uh, Mr. Dossie, any other staff? Any other staff members?
I think we're good.
Mr. Hilst.
Yes, thank you. I forgot to ask earlier when we were approving that contract for Bob. So with that being said, is, is Bob gonna be considered the treasurer? Who's, who's being, is anybody being paid that stipend for having the title of the treasurer?
Roy is getting the treasure, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Roy.
I don't know, Josie, if this is for you, I just wanted to reiterate what was asked earlier during public input about who would be maintaining that new bike path, walk path that we got up there by the stadium. Do you know who's required to maintain that?
The city will be required to maintain that, however, I have had some discussions with the park district about plowing. Um, they're already plowing their bike trail and have said, you know, if, if we get to it first, great, if they get to it first, you know, they'll, they'll help with plowing and such as well.
Okay. Trent, I guess this one might be for you, so, since we passed that ordinance quite a while back about these lift assists, are we billing these assisted living and funeral home outfits every time we go and do a lift assist there?
So the ordinance is for nursing homes only and.
Well, that does include assisted living facilities?
No, because the, when we went through that, we talked about how so many of them vary in what's, what is assistance. Down to some of those are no, nothing more than a apartment complex where they're not really getting any assistance. So as far as nursing homes in twenty-twenty-three, there was one lift assist at a nursing home. I wound up calling them and trying to get, what's the deal with this, because it normally doesn't happen. They had a patient that was passing and a few other weird circumstances where somebody fell, they had this other thing going on. We did not bill them for that because it was a one-off situation. So in a nutshell, there was one, the circumstance allowed for us to do it, I thought, because the patient was on the ground and they did not have any help for them at that moment.
Okay, are we getting several of those at the assisted living facilities though?
I can run a report on that.
That we're not allowed to charge?
I can run a report on that, it's, uh, it's probably not as many as you would think because a lot of times those people wind up going to the hospital anyway, so it's not just a simple lift only. Something a lot of times caused them to fall, it's not always just mechanical tripping. Sometimes it's heart-related or, or difficulty breathing or something like that.
Okay. And then the last thing I wanna bring up was the issue with Mr. Dunkelberger being removed off that EDAC. I wanna get that out and get that whole thing cleared, so, Kate, I'm gonna ask you first, what, what language in our own, ethics and conduct policy that we have, what, what language says that we don't have to follow that? Where's that language that says that we can abide by a state statute rather than abide by our own home rule policy?
So the code of conduct sets forth procedures and possible sanctions, um, for violations of the code of conduct, but the very last paragraph of that section says these sanctions are alternatives to any other remedy that might otherwise be available, uh, to remedy conduct that violates this code or state or federal law.
Just for that section?
Just for that section, yeah. Also, there's no, the, um, the code of ethics and conduct wasn't in the, uh, in the ethics code, uh, wasn't cited, um, as, you know, there even being a violation of it, so. That section of the municipal code remains available for use by the, the mayor and the council.
So that's, and, and that's another area where I'm struggling with a little bit when it, when it says that the complaint that Mr. Dunkelberger filed for not following armed policies isn't even a reason in our own complaint, but we haven't been given a reason for Mr. Dunkelberger to be removed off of that committee. What, what are we, what are we basing in our city code that he did wrong? Says interfering with city business, where does it say in there?
Mr. Dossie, would you like to answer that question, please?
I mean, we, we were trying not to, uh, go there, but he wants to go there. Five AM or six AM, he texted, uh, uh, a service that we're con- contractionally involved with and specifically stated he was looking for ways to basically cut costs for the city with then, no knowledge from anybody, myself, uh, the fire chief or anybody and, uh, you know, potentially eliminate some positions. To the point where the people he cont, he reached out to felt very uncomfortable with having any of those conversations. And this isn't the first time this has happened, this isn't the first time he's put the city in, uh, precarious, uh, positions, in particular with some, uh, uh, economic development situations where, quite frankly, we were in a position where somebody was gonna, in essence, take advantage of the city on, on a land agreement that he put before us and was pushing us to enter into an agreement, had we not done our due diligence. We could have very easily entered into an agreement and, in essence, been fleeced, um, at that time. So it's, it's, it's just kind of several things that have gone up and he continues to put us in these predicaments. And, uh, the mayor made a decision at that time that she was just gonna remove him, uh, from EDAC at that point in time. Now, as a citizen, if he goes out and does these things, it's not as a representative of the city, it's on his own and we don't have any liability or connection to that, so that's what that was about.
Okay, so we've got documentation of that text message, then?
Absolutely.
Because the council never received it, that's my whole point. All this stuff goes on.
He should have that on his own phone, he sent the text.
We were trying not to get it out there, um, too publicly, but you asked.
That's right, I certainly did. And so then I'll go to the complaint that he filed after he was removed from that committee. Since he wasn't told why, he just, he was just told he was, uh, interfering with city business.
Well, when you're talking about union contract people, you're interfering with city business.
Right, but my point is, I don't think that text message that you guys are referring to, I don't think he had any idea that's why he was being removed from that committee, because he wasn't told that's why. He was just told he was interfering with city business and he was given no specifics. That's why he wanted a chance to defend himself.
I really don't think that.
I'm not, I'm not gonna say I did have a conversation with another council member who, I, I guess I naturally assumed because they told me they were gonna go back and let him know.
That's right.
I clear, I clarified what the issue was with them, so.
And I'll fess up, I'm the one you talked to, I, I own that, not a problem with it, I did go back and talk to him. Come to find out, he didn't even have a clue what he sent. He's thinking it was something that happened two years ago.
Right.
All the way up until last Friday.
And, and this was before, you know, you, you brought it up, so I, I just naturally assumed he was already aware of what it was about.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying if, if, if somebody's gonna be removed, whether it's him or anybody else that's on any of these committees, I think that they have the, the due process of at least somebody calling and telling them why and, and verifying that they did what they did instead of just making a public announcement at a meeting that you're being removed in a pretty vague description, quite frankly. Anyway, so the form that he filled out, at, at the time he filled this out, this is a, this is a City of Pekin Ethics Commission complaint form. So this needs updated, number one, because we don't even have an ethics commission anymore. So this document shouldn't even exist. And within our policy, after he sent this in to sue and then she refers it and, and passes it along to our administrative hearing officer, whenever the hearing officer makes a decision on face value, whether there's a legitimate valid complaint or not, either way, whether it's decided that there is or decided that there isn't, the city council is supposed to get a written report on that and we never got a written report. A written report was sent to Mr. Dunkelberger and I'm assuming Mary may have got one, I don't know that for a fact, but none of the rest of us up here got one. And the policy says that we're supposed to get a written report on whatever the hearing officer's findings are on any complaint sent to her, any complaint, not just this one.
Mr. Dossie, did you not send that out, or, or was it sent to?
That, that may be, because there's so many things going back and forth, I may have missed making copies to put out, I could certainly do that with what her written finding was.
Oh, I've got a copy of it now, but we didn't get one at the time.
Pardon me?
Yeah, I own that one because I.
I can't remember either.
It was sent, I did get a copy of it, I just, I, I didn't think to hand it out, that's on me.
I got mine from Mr. Dunkelberger.
Councilmember Hilst.
Yes.
When Mr. Dunkelberger came into my office to file a complaint.
Yes.
He was told to do that, I told him that's not the correct form to complete for ethics when the mayor, he had placed in her letter, it was under state statute.
But it was a, see, that's where I think a lot of people are getting confused, they're trying to combine ethics and conduct into one group and they're two separate things.
Tried telling him that.
Yeah, and there's also, uh, a comment that had been made that he sent an email that the city wasn't sending it to the proper address either. But yet, the address it was sent to is what he put down on the complaint form he filled out as well as what he put down on, uh, his application for the, uh, Economic Development Committee. So I guess I'm at a loss at what address it should have been sent to, because it's the two addresses he provided, including the most recent on the complaint form, so, a lot of finger pointing going on, but there's a lot of factual things in there that, that just are what they are and we tried to handle it without putting him in a predicament out there, but he is pushing it to go here, so here we are.
Right, and, and I agree, and, and, and it is what it is, I mean, I just think it's fair to get it out there. I mean, the way it was, that a way it all played out, basically the council really didn't have anything, I didn't anyway, any knowledge about it, but then we get thrown in a, into the whole mix after the fact. I think it's fair to bring it up and talk about it. And I don't think Mr. Dunkelberger would have a problem with that, and if he does, he could come back in the next meeting and explain it, I don't know. But I, I just wanna get it out there and get it discussed and get it washed and be done with it because I'm sick of hearing about it, quite frankly.
It is done. Mr. Abel.
Involved with the city employees picnic, it was very nice, heard some really good comments. Hot weather, but you could go inside where it was air-conditioned, so, very good, thanks for all the work. Chef?
Chefs?
Chefs, yes.
Ms. Hoheimer?
I will piggyback on what Mr. Abel said and, uh, talk about last Saturday, what a wonderful day it was, hot, but it was fun. Great man outside and seeing people and just, it was a, just really a nice day.
Mr. Oric.
Uh, yes, I'm just wondering about what's going on with our land over here that, uh, the county now owns? Because they still got a fence up, I don't think any other business would have that fence up and to me, that was an embarrassment to see that downtown where the parade ended. But, uh, I know we sold, sold some land to Center, Center Prevention of Violence. They had to sign a plan that they had to have a site plan and everything in within so many days and I don't know how many months it's been with the county and it's still sitting there. And I don't hear anything, is there anything going on? Are we gonna give them a unlimited timeline to do anything?
So first of all, I wanna answer part of that, you're really saying that, that there's no, we, we've gotta give them a limit or there's no time, because how long did we go through month after month after month, so?
Month of what?
That's all I wanna say. That's all I want to say. Mr. Dossi?
So I have not talked to them.
I have.
Been busy with some other things, but I will get ahold of Mike and have a sit-down with him and see exactly where they're at. I know they're going back and forth on the size of the building, what they are going to do exactly on that. I just haven't had a chance to get with them and talk to them about the fence and the sidewalk. And I don't know, I don't know how the sidewalk works down along Capitol. I don't think it's there on Capitol. I think it's on Court Street, correct?
They've removed sidewalk along Capitol and along Court Street. I know they're planning to put it back with their new development, but I think it probably would be prudent for the city to come up with some sort of timeline in which will require them to do that.
So we'll start talking to them about that.
I will. I will tell you that I spoke to Sheriff Flower and they are moving forward. They're just trying to figure out what they can actually afford now because costs have just gone up so much. So they're making plans, big time. Mr. Anken?
I was just gonna, I have found an answer for you, Mr. Hils, on the real estate tax. So when you're seeing some of these AP lists, at least for the, I guess this is probably pretty much the last month, some of these lists, some of them are getting charged to the prior fiscal year. So these taxes here, as we all know, real estate taxes are paid in arrears. And so they were booked to April 30 of the, of '24, which is really the prior fiscal year where we had no budget. And since, apparently that's been our pattern, is to do it on the last day of the fiscal year, I did not budget for it for the coming fiscal year either. So yes, we don't have a budget, but we haven't paid it yet for that, for this fiscal year until April of next year.
Okay.
So that is, that is an oversight on my behalf. I ran a trial balance literally, you know, two weeks before the end of our year to make sure everything was up to date. We hadn't booked any of that in there and I just didn't, it didn't clue into me that that was out there still hanging to be paid for '23. But we will make a special note to make sure that because real estate taxes are just backwards on, you know, the way their timing is.
Right.
To make sure that it's in the next budget. And if we end up being short in that overall fund, you know, as the year goes on, you know, and all the other contractual stuff, we'll be coming back to you. But, you know, right now, it's not an overwhelmingly large number compared to the size of the budget, but we'll watch it closer. So, but thank you for the catch.
It'd probably be roughly about the same as it was the prior year then?
Correct, correct. But we'll see how we get to at year end.
Gotcha.
Okay. No, that's okay. Now, Mr. Anken?
Got a big praise for Dean and his crews. There's a huge tree stump in, on around 14th and Caroline, which is just up the street from where I'm at. I mean, it was monstrous. It grew into the street, kinda did some damage to the street. His crew got that out. Beautiful sidewalk, fixed the road. Excellent job.
Thank you. That's what I love hearing from the staff, or to the staff. Mr. Nutter?
Well, first of all, thanks to Mr. Dossi, to Josh, to Roy on getting me the answers I needed for tonight's meeting. It's coming with a caveat, though. Roy, when you get done and we're finished, you need to come look at my screen. The redaction is back. So I don't know if it got, it was corrected, so.
AP?
Yeah, the AP. So I left it up here to look at. Shelley, what's the status on Mr. Rogan's replacement? Where do we stand? We gonna see him here for Christmas and have to get him a card and everything, or? That can be taken care of.
We actually have an interview scheduled tomorrow, so we're moving forward. If for whatever reason that was to not pan out, or we don't think it's gonna fit what our needs are, I think we're to that point where we probably would be coming back to council with a request to hire a headhunter to go out and find that person. This individual we're interviewing, I have high hopes for, but there's been a couple other I had high hopes for. And, you know, we'll do our due diligence on it because, you know, it's, the bar's been set high. So, and that's a compliment to Bob, but, you know, the bar's set high and I'd like to find something close to that bar. I know I'll never exceed that, but I think the city deserves that. And he certainly, in a very short time, pushed us ahead.
I agree.
From where we were at, and I want to continue that and build it better, so. Not to sound like certain other campaign slogans.
Hey, now.
But Shelley, yeah, Shelley does have a comment on this.
But thank you, Shelley.
Yeah. Oh, I told her I was gonna take it.
Thank you, John. I'll just add, like, the word is out. Like, we are getting applications slowly but surely. We've received 97 applications. We've interviewed five people. We have one more tomorrow. It's just, this position is hard to find. We've, we're doing many things to try. Headhunter potentially is next, but it's very costly, so we're trying every other thing first.
Thank you.
And we, one thing we have learned, we are on the very low end of, because it is government accounting, as we have learned over the course of the last year, is much different.
Yes, I would agree with that. This is, this next item is so I can get a good grandpa award, okay? What is the status on this splash pad down by the river? I've heard multiple answers and none of them are the same. So who would like to address that so I can get my award next week?
Well noted. So we had a conversation with Cameron here about a month ago. They're supposed to start late summer. They got delayed in some design issues or part issues. I'm not for sure 100%, but they're supposed to start late summer. Their anticipation is to get it open by August, maybe September.
So it's nothing the city has held up. It all falls on the Park District?
Correct. Their contractor was delayed.
I don't know that we can blame this 100% on the park. I think they're also irritated with their own contractor, so just throw that out there.
It's not the park, it's the contractor.
So you might not get the grandpa of the year award yet.
Yeah, boy, that's disappointing.
Yeah.
I want to go back to something that Mr. Hils brought up, and this is just a comment. And I think, I've heard two things. The form that somebody fills out for a complaint, be it ethics or conduct and/or both, needs to be updated. That's what I'm hearing. I don't know if that's correct or not, but if it is correct, we need to work on that. The second thing is, if we are not following our policy as sending information back to the council, everybody needs to reread that, and if we're off-base on what we're supposed to do to send information back to the council, even if it's information. Because Sue, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, haven't there been two other either ethics slash conduct things filed this year by other citizens? Early in this calendar year? To my knowledge, and maybe we got it and I just don't remember, but we need to go and follow the policy. We gotta be the leaders. We gotta step up. We're the ones that have to set the goal. And if we don't know what it is, don't understand it, needs to be rewritten, then we rewrite it. So I'll leave it at that. I'm gonna make another comment that was discovered last council meeting. I'm a little concerned with assessment of Mr. Hornicker's property once he gets part of it done because our chief building official has sent out multiple occupancy things. And I know, John, you and I talked about this. We gotta make sure we stay on top of this because, I don't know, I have an idea how much money we're losing, both in real estate, in the TIF, in BDD, well, not so much BDD, but any of the TIFs that we've got, if these properties aren't being reassessed right, that's just money down the drain. And it's, I don't know how to address it because it's gonna involve other government entities other than calling them all in and saying, hey, guys, here's what we got. Why aren't we? So I'll leave it at that.
That's it. Thank you. Okay, so I know it's hot in here, but I'll just take a few minutes. I first want to say thank you again for the council, for showing up for the luncheon, the employee recognition luncheon. I want to thank all the staff that participated, the chefs and cooks. It was extremely hot, so thank you very much. And I'm going to say that Lloyd and Rick, we missed you there. So maybe the next time, because it was very nice, very nice. I want to say thank you for Karen, for, you know, she's the new mayor pro temp this year for taking over next, or last meeting. I had a much-needed vacation with my family in Florida. It was wonderful. I want to thank Mr. Nutter for, on Flag Day, he spoke and that was the start of the kickoff for our downtown celebration. So I thank you. I was on vacation, so thank you for stepping up to the plate. I heard it was very well, very well done. No more lock boxes for wastewater. That is a savings for the City of Pickett. So I appreciate everybody, Melanie and her staff, moving forward and taking that on, so thank you. I'm gonna reiterate, I crossed it off, but I'm gonna reiterate about 4th of July. Don't forget, we are opening the time capsule at 9:00 AM. I've told people here in the front of City Hall, I believe it's going to be at the Wosley Building?
Yes.
Is that a script?
Yes.
So 9:00 AM, we have, we have some showcase out front that are starting to have some stuff put in. There's stuff from the 1800s, there's stuff from 1952. And then this one is 50 years old, so can't wait. Hopefully, everybody will be able to show up and have a nice crowd there. So with that, if anybody has, no one has anything else to say, I am going to make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Madam Clerk, call the roll. I, yeah.
Councilmember Orick?
Aye.
Councilmember Anken?
Aye.
Councilmember Nutter?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoheimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Abel?
Aye.
Councilmember Hils?
Aye.
Mayor Burbs?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Business is closed. Thank you.